Follow me to order. First point on the agenda is questions or comments on the board? None, okay. Next thing is the discussion of the budget distribution. The board, the budget that was distributed to the board.
So, um. Remind us of each document we have got. Okay, so the first one is the overall budget. We have the, we have the two finance committee. And, uh. The first document starts with a column that has expenditures on the left and then budget 2021 and budget 21, 22 next to it. Um, if you look at this, basically, this shows us with a 500, roughly $500,000 increase from last year to this year in expenses. In other words, this year's budget is $500,000 higher. Um, the main contributors to that are the $85,000 retirement incentive costs that we're anticipating and the $150,000 increase from both seasons. So that's 235,000 out of the 500, which puts us at a full level normal increase. We've kind of figured out as a finance committee that an average increase just to absorb contractual items in that is somewhere between $3.5 million probably a year. Okay. So this is basically in line with what we would say is an average year, except for those two outstanding. Um, the bottom, let's go to the bottom next to the thing. The very bottom, there's a, um. Text box, if you will, with notes that say federal funds need to be classified outside of budget similar to grant corporations, the very bottom of the page. This is extra monies that are coming from stimulus package, multiple stimulus packages actually, that will affect our district. The first one, the CRSA Act is, um, a total of a little bit over 1.2 million dollars to be used over three years. The second one, the ARPA, um, federal stimulus money is also used over three years, but it has some stipulations regarding remediation. The first stipulation, um, is 700,000, it's based on percentage, but in order to percentage and that's our plus, 700,000 plus then another 20% of balance left over. So that's like 1.25 million dollars, which is the third number that you see at the bottom, has to be used for learning loss out of that 3.4. Okay? That, those numbers will not, this was finalized in the last couple of days by the state, those numbers will not be in our normal state budget that we report. Okay? They will be tracked, um, on a separate line item, a separate page, basically. And that's where you get the handout on your desk. This is our recommendation for remediation for the next two years. In other words, use of that 1.2 million dollars via line item of what we're recommending to be utilized for learning loss. The caveat is some of the things we've already done are countable for the learning loss. In other words, they're eligible as actions for learning loss makeup, like our extra fees in the classrooms, um, like some of the extra assistance that we've brought in of the temporarys that we hired, um, some of the supplies that we bought, things like that. We may be able to recoup some of that cost against this special stimulus money. Um, so when you total all that out, we believe that will be close or exceed the 1.25 million dollars. Okay? Is everybody following so far?
Yes, it looks like at the end of the screen it's 1.6.
No, 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 that's, that's, uh, we've made that mistake too. So the column in the center of the page is a total across both years, the $918,200. That's a total for both years. And then the columns to the right of that break it down by year. Because what you'll notice is some of these items where the learning loss, um, initiative is planned to last for two years and some of those initiatives are planned to last for one. So that's why you see the difference between the annual columns.
One more thing, it says 1.25 million.
Yeah.
That's about 2021 through 2324.
Correct.
We only have a year of 2024.
Correct, we have not planned that year out. But remember how I started this, if you're looking at the 3.0, almost 3.5 million dollars up above, the ARPA of 3.496 million. We're talking about the 1.25 that has to be used for remediation, learning loss, if you will, and social emotional support, okay? And we're accounting for that 1.25 million. That still leaves the balance of 2.2 million dollars, almost 2.25 million dollars. And we have worked through initial recommendations of what we anticipate should be done with that. Um, we need to create a written proposal by July 1st. And that written proposal would need to be ratified by the board and then posted publicly on our school website. So we have not allocated the other 2.2 million dollars in this document. We have some other ideas, so that will come to the board, um, at a further date. Probably the month of May, when we talk about today, we should have a really good idea of bringing forth a good recommendation to the board. Uh, because then some of the idiosyncrasies of this A will be ironed out a little bit, or the stimulus will be ironed out a little bit as well. So we'll be able to really address that more. You want to add anything to Pete?
No, I just think it's, it's an exciting time for us because we're getting funding to do some of the inter-american education.
You can go over.
It's a pretty exciting course because we're getting the funding that will help us improve some of the grades that we've been struggling with, but it's also a time where we're now, where we're projecting our budgets two or three years out, which is pretty exciting. We haven't been able to do that in the past. I mean, I think we're setting the course to be stable for long term, which is really nice.
The other thing that I want to note is this is a tax budget with 0% changes. And as Pete said, we're taking painstakingly, painstaking efforts to be looking at least three to four years out for keeping our tax decreases, um, to be reasonable and minimized as much as possible utilizing this stimulus aid. So we believe that we have a good four to five year plan, that we just need a few more things to be finalized with requirements and we'll be able to bring that to the board for ratification. What we would like the board to take action on, if it is willing, is to accept this high level budget that's in front of you of the $23,125,725 so that we can post the replacement positions and these remediation positions, because everybody in the state is going to be jumping to spend this remediation money because it's a requirement. Nick and the administration has the postings ready to go and they're literally waiting for us to ratify so that they can post them and get a job. And that is our recommendation as a finance committee to the board as a whole. So, uh, I don't remember that being under the actions, but hopefully it is.
Uh, no, it's generally at the next meeting, but we can certainly look at how the budget figures.
We would, we would like to do that.
Do any type of motion?
So why don't we just do it right now? Any questions or concerns?
Remember, you're just making a motion for the zero and the non amount. We can always buy the 29 to change categories or whatever, right? So in other words, the expenditures will not get any higher than the $23,125,725. And it will be a zero tax increase. That is what we're asking for ratification.
Okay, so can you make that a formal motion?
I agree with that.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you for your.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Okay, thank you.
Just another little note on the.
Thank you to the finance committee.
On the federal funds, I just got the saying of, there's anything to the board, we also open up the community for equipment and have time for that July 1th. So probably by June meeting, actually, hopefully a lot of everything in place. There's still so much stuff to sort out right now. Um, it, it's not final on every little detail how this money can be used entirely. We do know some that has to be used for this, but there's other pieces that we're still waiting for. And, and we have already discussed making sure that we have measures and metrics in place so that we can on a periodic basis know whether these remediations are working, readjust, adjust our spending if we need more in this direction and less in that direction. Need to organize differently for delivery. We want to make sure that we're taking this one time shot of stimulus money and having impact on our district that we can, the maximum impact. And that's going to require us doing regular measurements like we talked about in the last couple of board meetings, I-rig assessments on a periodic basis and readdressing things. All, all of those actions that we've been talking about the last few board meetings are critical that we continue those so that we can redirect as the board to make sure that the, um.
Say it on the spot.
Initiatives, but I'm not thinking of record. The interventions, that's what I think. That the interventions are doing what we've been to do. And next year, we're going to be taking a look at and re-allocate the resources to the areas. We're making moves, we might even be making investments for the big picture.
Okay, well before we move on, I just also want to say that we, just looking at the remediation list, it looks like a very exciting thing that can really give a benefit to our students and teachers beyond the impact of the coronavirus. And so I think it's, uh, it's a very exciting opportunity for us. I'm very, very excited about that.
And as Pete and I were talking with Nick in this class, we really believe that if we do this properly, it can really reposition our district for the next 20 years.
Okay, anything else on the budget?
There's a piece in there for just one, it works as administrative content. Fund balance. It's just a breakdown. If you open that up, I think there's important areas. If you look at the top, that's, you see where it says total fund balance is 6.1? That's how much we should anticipate having in our fund balance at the end of the year. The idea with that is to take and put in the ERS, the TRS, the categories or instructors on the equipment or, okay, over the next year to build that up. That would leave us with that much fund balance if you see that. Uh, we will have a tax increase, so that won't matter. And our fund balance at 6.2 would be that amount, you see? What we're trying to do with these reserves, and this, this is, this is the bigger picture, right? What we're trying to do is create reserves that enable us to level out our spending for big ticket items so that we can have more of a, okay, we have a $50,000 line item every year, but that will enable us to buy the cloud, you know, we need it on year three, buy this, you know, we need it on year two, et cetera. Um, for the equipment one, for example. Um, and that, that's the money we approved at the last board meeting. So that can also, furniture, there's a lot of things that we put in there. Um, and with the ERS, we're trying to get our fund balance to a point where we then have a balance that we can count on for $500,000 draws from it to help, again, keep our tax increases modest over a long period of time, right? Uh, and this stimulus money will not only help us with the learning loss intervention, but it'll help us create the right kind of reserves, uh, to be in place so that we can stabilize that long-term picture. And we want to move on some things now because once we fund that, we'll get into the, we do that now, we get refund next year. Um, technology, SMARTboard, especially off the SMARTboard, we mentioned that done, so we get the money back next year and we have the SMARTboard stop and roll over every classroom next year, for example. Um, and that's investment for our future. Talking about making, uh, enhanced learning laws in classrooms and in classrooms, that will take us through, in three years probably, not three years, but I would say we'll have another, see where the best areas would be in those and to start to figure out, you know, how much it's going to cost and break that down. So that money, we would like to kind of, especially the technology, the condition survey, start that building up now, I mean, um, because again, we get refund next year for it. And let's face it, we're going to move into this, you know, hold it in the direction of remediation, helping our kids, bringing our kid back. Everybody's got one, let's make sure our technology is available for our classroom mail. So we're in good shape to do that, yeah? That make sense? We also are planning, um, you'll see here, the capital reserve, um, almost to the bottom of page, it's like six on the bottom. We're recommending that we get that to $500,000 by 6.4 so that our capital project can actually be larger and that will enable us to deal with maintenance issues and also put us on a more stable budget track by having those things dealt with and managed. That'll be a form of, not that we don't tax pay for that. Right. So we're, we're really trying to do things that are long-term looking to the district to stabilize our expenditure structure, utilizing these stimulus monies. And of course, the fact that we've managed our budget wisely for the last two years and really done conservatively puts us to a larger degree in this position to be able to do it. So this, we're controlling uncontrollables, if you could say, and we're, we're planning for the future, we're controlling things we can't control, like roof bathrooms and certain areas that dishwasher is going to be done and then maybe even the lawn mower. We're getting those taken care of, so in two years, which don't go up, we need the 40,000. I don't like that. So, um, because here's what's going to happen, we all know this, two or three years, there's going to be something that's going to pass or not in respect. So we control what we can't control now to put ourselves in a better financial situation by ourselves. Um, we're good with moving forward with this type of plan? Everybody on the page with it? That make sense? Okay.
But finally, I'd like to very disappoint Nick on one question, which is I had asked him to increase our compensation in the school board measures. He only offered us 10%, and thought it should have been 100%. Oh, wow.
And that would look like to put down 100%? Still the same number.
Okay, so the next one on the agenda is COVID update.
Yes. There's notes out here. Okay, first thing, testing. That's state and region testing and COVID testing. So we have our state test rolling out for our 3th through 8th graders, uh, coming up next month or next week. Next month, what's that? Next week, too. Um, and very limited, um, how, how long will you say the test is going to take?
Well, I, the 3rd grade and the 4th grade have 18 questions, multiple choice for the ELA and 28 for the 5th grade. So it should, so it shouldn't take very long at all. It should take at the most than an hour, at the very most, I would say.
The vast majority of students, I would assume, may be done within an hour. Many of the students will maximize their time, they take hours and hours to do it. In the normal circumstance, I would assume that we won't have a handful of people that take longer than an hour now. Uh, 6 to 8 is the same number as 28. Um, generally, it's seven questions per passage, so I would assume there's more reading passages for ELA and seven questions, probably a degree in that.
A rule with testing out, the students are remote, can't come in and take it, but they don't have to. Um, our region testing, same thing, we'll have four reuse exams, actually, pretty much three reuse exam because we do first science here and that's the department, federal exam for science, they probably got credit for, so they don't have to take a living warrant. So if you want to take it, then it's first science, then whatever, then you can take it. Uh, and that's what we do here for the testing version. So, um, they'll be out for offer, they'll be ELA offer, students will have to take it in their science. Uh, again, the most students do not have to take it, it does not count for graduation, um, and it does not count for a survey. So, but it'll give them the experience of setting for these exam. Wouldn't be surprised to see a lot of remote kids last week. I'll say that. Um, testing, we'll be offering a testing, um, COVID testing for our faculty, staff and students on May 28th. We'll start to gather that information over the next couple of weeks, uh, giving a survey out, seeing if people who want to sign up for it. And we have now a little bar, we don't have any snow, probably have that day off because we have an extra snow day and that will be the usual testing day for anybody in, like I said, are, anybody in, um, faculty staff and students signing up currently. We're looking at, posting a vaccine site here on the 20th of April and the 11th. We're hoping those dates match up. Everything's still kind of on hold until the county tells us. Um, we're looking at the Pfizer vaccine coming in, we're doing a survey now and it'll be from 4 to 7 o'clock and it'll be open to anybody 16 years and older in our community and our community. Um, so we'll see what happens in terms of they put the order in and how many they will get. And that's looking for, again, next week, it's going to cost a little. Um, it'd be a nice thing, local, we get some extra people out, students can start getting vaccinated as well. Right now, 76% of our faculty and staff are fully vaccinated, by the end, it's 76%. Um, which, you know, we probably have a few more as time goes on, but our folks hit 80 and we're very close to that. We brought the seniors back as well, every day, which is a great thing, allows them to finish up their career as they started here, right? Every day. So exciting to have a senior back, we got information on graduation celebration ceremonies, which didn't change a lot that we were expecting. Um, if we have something outside, we can have 200 people, but we're not sure if that means counting the students and the spectators or not. Because in sports events, you don't have to count the athletes, you don't have to count the spectators, we're waiting on clarification on that. Does that help us too much? Well, if you do the math, 65 students, if you did everybody once, that would be only two, two or three people, uh. If we can count it in two separate ceremonies, we'd have 500 per person. So we're still, you know, working out the bugs and not know that was starting. If you go over the 200, you now have to ask for the, either a negative test or the vaccine, which could turn a little bit into a problem, especially if people don't have it, right? And now grandma can't come or a dad can't come. I know universally you might say, well, they'll get their vaccine tested and these set, but I think it would exclude people. So we'll take a hard look at that tomorrow in the administrative meeting and start to break some of that down. Um, the other celebrations I think were a good pace for, for, for having inside the eighth grade graduations and the, you know, ceremonies and things of that nature, I think we're in pretty good shape. Prom is still on tap and positive awards, we're in good shape there. And let's see what else they have.
Does prom still satisfy any?
Correct. And then, um, the staking down with the three foot rule, which comes with a lot of hoops in it, okay? Six foot still for lunch, breakfast, six foot for, uh, music, six foot for, for PE. Um, so you're only going to have it in classrooms. Not to mention they're asking you to cohort at high school, which is very hard to do because there's students that are, um, scheduled. Get fools, people together, it's my changer and my schedule. It's also happening out in there that if your region goes up to a certain amount, you have to go back to six foot. So if you're going to change all, everything, you could possibly back within a week or two. Uh, that's, but the good thing, our district, K6 in every day, 79 at 11 and at least 50% pockets every day, 12 every day. We're not too far off as it is. Um, to change the entire piece, I think it would be a little more difficult for, for right now. So we're going to look at that again tomorrow as well. So again, everything has a move to it, right? Everything, uh, something you have to jump through. So that's where we are with our update at this point. If we're moving along rate, there's really, uh, tomorrow 10 minutes left. It's, uh, that'd be over quick. All good?
Any questions? If any, then. The next thing on the agenda is the student representative report, if you can wait a little later.
Yes. So, the United Nations has been a top secret organization that I'm proud to finally release to you in some of our work in order to give students, administrators and faculty members the credit and recognition they deserve. So I wanted to first tell you, it came up, I always must devour the name we named at the United Nations because we thought that, you know, we're three students and administration and faculty all come from different places to work together, so I have to give them credit for the name, it's awesome. So, in the midst of wanting to give back, back to our seniors, Jacob Nasson, Carol Phillips and myself have teamed up with Mr. Patino in order to create events that our seniors will remember for a lifetime. We noticed that our numbers were lacking a tad bit, therefore we had to call some extra recruits. We brought on the one and only dynamic duo of the century, Mr. Schott and Mr. Hoarder to give our seniors the one thing they would always want the most, a senior Kendo game show. And following up with that, senior Kendo game show is not just your ordinary game show. Unfortunately, Steve Harvey is not the host, but we have something even better. Dean Tension and Marcus Appson travel all the way from who knows where they come from to give the seniors in Kandiar High School a game show of a lifetime. Our seniors did not know that this was coming, but when they finally realized it, the smiles and laughs that occurred from them was one of the most rewarding things I have ever experienced. Just the look on their faces when Chopta's torture started to play and the intro to Kendo game show began to roll makes me extremely proud to be a part of the school community like ours. Now, whether we faculty facing students who gave a faculty feud, or students having to guess a teacher hiding behind a filter or drawing, we witnessed students from all their so-called clips getting on the action. Never did I see a student frowning or not having a good time. Everyone was laughing and sharing cherishable memories with one another. Now, at the end of the Kendo game show, I think the best way to end an event is to make everyone cry together. Therefore, I put together a video montage for us to watch as a class as a display of positive messages from a few teachers to memories that we all left together. I'm very proud to say that I did make a few people cry, including myself. Watching this video together has shown us how much we have grown and the amount of potential we have to become in this world. Mrs. Simms' Monica's communications class has recently put out a school newsletter called the Hallfriend. I'd like to give these students recognition as what they're able to create is pretty cool. Whether it be an article about school earths, culture, or even a recommendation to a good book, these students were able to create a visually appealing, appealing and informing student orientated, oriented newsletter. The class of 2021 is continuing to receive mental and many thankful donations for the program community as we work together towards a promising financial status for our class. I can most definitely say that the words are starting to slow down as we see more help from our community. Lots and lots of thank you letters are being currently written. As we know, the Pfizer vaccine has been approved in New York State for all people 60 and over, we can add key to our students, their eligibility for this vaccine as we have been sending emails further protecting our community right within our school buildings.
Any questions or comments? So I have, I have two requests. One is I would like to know if we could get a copy of the video?
Yes.
And the other is if we could get a copy of the Hallfriend, we'll get.
Of course. Dr. Fitzgerald, that was something that, um, was sent to, like, all students, so I can just forward that? Gotcha.
I can include them.
I'm sorry?
You can include them on the, on the email sent out also.
Yes, of course.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Tom? You know, uh, next thing on the agenda is approvals. I would ask for consent agenda, unless there's any, any people's.
C, C needs to be taken out.
What?
C needs to be taken out because I wasn't careful about working.
Okay, so do B through N without C, correct?
Yes.
Okay, you just have to have a motion.
Motion.
Second, second. More favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so we'll start with the March eleven minutes. Any questions or comments on that? And moving on to March twenty-fifth.
You need to do that as a separate.
Yeah, we'll go on. Is that okay? All right, Bill, any questions there? Uh, I just have one. Um, number fifty-nine, eight thirty-three, Cleo, Kayla, machine.
Yeah, but she does our, she's a physical therapist that we contract with.
She's a physical therapist?
Yeah.
Yes, PT, yep.
Any other questions, Tom, else?
First student, nothing. First student, I'm assuming.
Yes, first students with disabilities, yeah.
Okay, treasures report, anything there? Again, I have a couple of questions, I, um, on the trust agency report, Cleo, um, it says additional PR experts for two, uh, nineteen twenty-one, and also for twenty-two, six point nine, you know, six thousand nine hundred for, uh, I just have never seen that before, I was just wondering what it would be.
It was just a difference in the amount that, um, posits have given me to do the transfers. I had to do additional help. It was just an additional help needed in order to balance everything between the payroll account and trust agency account.
For just the accounting?
Yeah, it's from, um, the payroll account to the trust agency account.
And, uh, payroll account, uh, said outstanding expert, five point, five thousand four hundred minutes. I, I don't have never seen that before, it's my next.
Yeah, it's just to balance between those two accounts, because money's always transferred back and forth for every single payroll.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, why is it showing?
Yeah, there was a difference, there was just a.
Is it there before?
No, it wasn't, it's not usually there. There was just a difference that long. That's why, no, you're right, it's not usually there.
Okay, good. I was worried I was. Uh, then one last question on, uh, hold on, it's not a question. Anything else on treasure report anymore? I did the math on the end, but I don't say anything, okay? Um, on budget plan, any questions there? I just had one with curiosity, is, is it teaching one to six, year, G E R?
Yeah, that, that's it. Those are the CARES Act money, so we have that S R money and then year money for the CARES Act. So in order to account for them.
What? The federal stimulus.
In order to account for them, I have to make different codes and then move money into those codes and move stuff all over the place.
But what, what is year, what is G E R?
It's.
Okay, can I?
That's a good question, I don't know, it's part of the CARES Act.
Governor's emergency education relief fund.
And that's part of the CARES Act?
Yes.
I don't know, I just, I was just wondering, yeah. Anything else on, on transfer, transportation requests?
Yeah, I have a question. Are they being moved in?
No, there's no, there's no new students.
There's no what?
There's no being students.
They, oh, I see the date saying, okay. They were.
They approve courses? I just had a comment there, I just thought it's really exciting to see some electric bath courses being offered and not just the medium ones, you know, which is, um, you know, I think it's great to see students having some more opportunities in that, in that area, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions on that? Okay, SRO Plan Track? Anything?
Are there any changes on this?
Nothing, just a decrease, actually. Their pension will point down.
Questions? Okay, good with that? Okay, then environmental review, anything there?
I didn't understand why we needed this. What, what is this?
This is a hundred thousand dollar project, we're kind of working on the basement, so we just have to have it on the books. But, uh, violations. It's just a requirement from the state.
So did the architect look at potential environmental impact?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Because we're asking to swear to something that.
Yes, no background, which means.
This is just a formality that asks that you look through if you're doing violations.
Okay, uh, school tax reimbursement? Okay, um, and we have free policies, any questions of any of those?
Updating what you're asking, you know, the, the regulations are on there too, like you asked, you know, everything should be, could be going.
And I, any questions on any of those, because it is what we discussed, uh, the last meetings. Anyone? Okay, so with, uh, I asked for, uh, vote on the consent agenda minus this number C?
Motion.
Number second?
Second.
On table?
Aye.
Vote. In, uh, the, uh, March twenty-five minutes, in the motion, vote. Second. Second. Okay, uh, on table?
I, I vote, same.
Okay. Also, move on to personnel. We have some retirements.
You have a veteran retiring today, they won't be in because we're having a celebration at the end of the month. Can we do this as a consent, though?
Okay, um, I guess, I, I, should I go through them one by one, or are there any questions about any of them? Uh, I think there's five or so.
Yes, there was, there, uh, there wasn't enough, probably D B B's block, but we would raise it to nine five. Like, we remember we pointed six months earlier, so there were enough students with D B B's block, but they designed D B B's block, which didn't take them out.
And we got appointed someone else last spring, and he resigned in January, um, but they didn't know yet, so we need to get that out here, so we did it. But he bought it by the baseball.
What if, what if we use for the soccer?
It's a way straight, isn't it?
Right, that's the point, Dan.
On each.
Oh, sorry. All right. Probably have this year is, just because of the seasons, the season starts the twenty-fourth, the twenty-fifth, and then next quarter begins the twenty-first, so.
Okay, and, and addition to the retirements and the resignations, any, uh, uh, any questions on the coaches?
Were there changes in the legal? I didn't notice any.
No, I don't believe so, there's.
There's no, it said, oh, there's somewhere, uh, vacancies not applied, no.
Yeah, we, what we do is we post, and we, you know, want to take it on your own person, we can introduce, um, a conference person that we did last year, that we valued, we should, you know, get out, we get out, and move forward with them, and then we start to, uh, start to get a file of the coaches hopefully in the future. By law, you're supposed to appoint, uh, excuse me, advertise each year for a position.
I love that statement, please.
Supposed to, you're supposed to, um, advertise, pre-appoint, or pre-appoint them, yeah.
Also, you're supposed to advertise.
That's what we're doing, remember, we did the six month prior, so we're starting to do that advertising for us.
Do you want, any, any other questions about any of these?
No.
Do you want to present agenda, Cleo? Do you like to do that?
Yes.
Okay, a motion?
Second.
Uh, on table?
Aye.
Vote. Okay, um, it's, uh, I don't see any home business or new business, but you have, uh, something I'd like to discuss in exec with just four members, so I got a motion to generate to exec.
Can we just, uh, just review what's coming up for board meetings?
Okay.
Let's get them all, you know. We have H M M Bosie's.
Yeah, I know you.
And no meeting, which is, if you want us to throw you an email, hold it, means.
Bosie's tomorrow.
The H M M Bosie's wants tomorrow, that's maybe at six o'clock, but that's something we don't use in the board room, and everything.
If they send her an email with us, it's optional.
Then we have to approve to H M M Bosie's budget, which is in their morning.
Which is what day?
That is the twenty-eighth, seven fifteen, A M, V O S.
Did you say the fifteenth?
A M, V O S.
Right on.
Yes. It's like a five minute meeting where you.
Seven thirty?
We do seven thirty.
Everybody's doing a web action, do seven thirty.
And we also do the golf, but, uh, golf's.
It's that quick five minute.
Right, I'm just trying to think where I'm gonna be, I just, I probably should go to school earlier, but, okay, so there's that at seven fifteen.
We'll do it, is it okay to do it seven thirty?
Whatever, whatever works for everybody, whatever.
Seven thirty.
Whatever, seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty A, right?
And then the twenty-nine, we're gonna be here at six to appoint tenure, have a six, ten, six fifteen celebration for tenure and retirees, and pick our meeting back up at six forty-five.
Okay, so that's starting at six on the twenty-ninth?
Correct.
You guys, actually, just send out an email, the, the web links, links and all that, okay, Dan?
Yeah.
Now, this is a backup, so we'll make sure it's in the package.
I did send the one person for, for the Bosie's annual meeting out already.
Yeah, well, you can do them all again, just, just tomorrow morning, is that okay?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone has the opportunity, if they want to, to discuss.
And then May is what?
You really wanna go with that?
And, um, there's gonna be a reason why I'm gonna go there. We have the one on May thirteenth, right? And then we have a different one, we have a budget one.
We have, so the twenty-eighth is the morning one, the twenty-ninth is our regular meeting.
Right.
At six o'clock.
Right.
Then we have May sixth is the budget hearing.
Six.
Yeah, at six.
With the budget for the board's occasion?
With the board resignation meeting at seven, or, oh, whatever kind of one.
Six.
I didn't have that.
I didn't.
Oh, we're doing the board resignation meeting, just.
Yeah. I mean, unless you're going home for your estimate.
No, that's fine, but my, so I guess where I was going with this is make, if you're gonna be off on the twenty-eighth, do you really wanna have a board meeting on the twenty-seventh? In case some people want, you know, administrators or teachers or whoever want to leave earlier. I have school on that Friday, so if it may get, it may could, um.
No, sure. That's all I'm thinking.
Man, I'll be here, it's prom.
I, I don't, it doesn't matter, you can, you can change it, keep it.
I was just trying to think what people would want, you know.
Good one. Now you can change it, so it's also.
Okay, keep it, move it, anybody?
Well, if you have a board meeting on the sixth, why not do a board meeting on the ninth? To be flatter instead of pretty flatter.
What's for me? Twenty, it's N J H S and N E H S, if that happens.
Oh, yes.
What did you say?
It's National Junior Honor Society, National Honor Society.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Was that the next difference? Do you wanna have it Tuesday, twenty-fifth?
Well. No.
Okay.
Um, I don't think so, but I am, I am thinking, well, actually, I'm, 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 I'm considering. Um, but I do like your idea of not having it on the twenty-seventh.
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me, I don't think you can have it on twenty-seventh, I was just trying to think along of everybody here, so it doesn't matter.
I'm just trying, are you okay for twenty-fifth?
I can do twenty-fifth, I can do it.
Are you okay for twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Are you okay for twenty-fifth, Steph?
Yeah.
Mark?
I don't have a wife.
Haley, you okay on twenty-fifth?
I'll say.
You guys? Cleo? I can't read numbers. Sounds good. Celebrate our A and S line victory for.
Okay, so there isn't a board meeting on the thirteenth?
There is none.
All right. So the sixth and the twenty-seventh, okay.
Correct.
And why do you?
I definitely wasn't that good.
Because behind, you just, she just texted me that she did together, that would be Tuesday to the thirteenth. I said, welcome to Bible.
All right, we're good. So you want to meet in there?
And the voting vote is named A P?
Okay, um, I request a motion to, to, to exec.
Motion.
Do you agree? Okay, thank you very much, you're wonderful, Lee.
Good night, everyone.
Y'all, good night.
Good job on the game show.
You got an hour by the moment. You got an hour by the moment.